All right, good evening and welcome to the April 1st, 2025, meeting of the Hickory City Council. This is not an April Fools', we're having a meeting. So at this time, I would like to invite the Reverend Kristy Laurie Sap from St. Andrews Lutheran Church to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Show us your mercy, O God, and grant us your salvation. Give us the joy of your saving help and sustain us with your beautiful spirit. Give peace in all the world, for only in you can we live in safety. Keep all nations and cities in your care and guide us in the ways of justice and truth. Let your ways be known upon the earth and your saving help among all nations. Let not the needy be forgotten nor the hope of the poor be taken away. We give thanks to you, Almighty God, that you have graciously protected us this day and ask that you would keep us through this night. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one person who has signed up to be heard tonight at every council meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, we allow up to three minutes for individuals that would like to address the city council. It's not necessary for you to sign up, but we prefer that you sign up prior to the meeting, and you can do that, of course, by contacting the city clerk at City Hall. But otherwise, there's a sign-up sheet as you come in, but if you miss that as well, we will still allow you your three minutes if you so choose to do so. So at this time, I would ask Mr. Joe Britton to the podium. If you do choose to address the council, we ask that you come to the podium, that you state your name and address for the record, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. Mr. Britton.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Anyway, my name is Joe Britton. I'm seventy-five and three-quarters years old. I've lived in Hickory all my life except for when Uncle Sam gave me a four-year vacation. And I've always liked Hickory, it's a great little town. And I'm really here today, oh, I live in Northmore subdivision. If I gave you my address, you could not find my house. It's a court boulevard playing. Anyway, so anyway, what I'm here for is growing up in Hickory, I've known a lot of people that have done well, and I've known a lot of people that haven't done as well as they should. But one of them that is the epitome of a good citizen, a good patriot, is Robin Gatwood, Jr. Some of you may have heard of him or know of him through the movie Bat 21. When he was in Hickory, he was a little older than I was, and he was actually our paper boy, and he worked for the Hickory Daily Record. And if you had a father, your father would say, why can't you be more like Brock? I mean, he was just a straight shooter, solid as it was. Of course, he went in the military. And tomorrow, the fifty-three years, he was shot down in a very unique aircraft called RB-66, which used to be a bomber, but they turned it into a SAM jammer. Well, it didn't work because they got hit. And Robin, well, there were six souls on board, we recovered one, and Robin is one of those we did not recover. So he paid the ultimate sacrifice for all of us. And I think we need to remember that, especially tomorrow, and say a little prayer for him and his family. We just take so many things for granted. And the reason I take it personal is I knew him as a civilian here, but I was also on his rescue mission. And with call signs, you don't know who's on these planes. I mean, it could be your twin brother, but you don't know unless you know his call sign. So it took me a while to figure out, but we did everything humanly possible. At the time, it was the largest rescue mission ever launched by the United States to try to get those other five souls, which we did not. We lost eight more soldiers, airmen, and five additional aircraft trying to save and find them. Very unique story on how we did find the one and we got him out. Hollywood took a little bit of a leeway with it, but basically, it's basically true. And I just think we owe that. And the other thing I would like to see, I think somewhere we need a memorial park or a veterans' park. I've gone to a lot of these small towns since I've retired, and some of them have some magnificent remembrance. They have World War I, World War II, Korea, Iraq. And I just think it'd be something Hickory should look into. And we're blessed with a lot of parks, and I'm sure Bruce, we could probably take half of his, he wouldn't care. You know, that's a pretty big place up there. But anyway, that's what I'm here for. And I also helped start Fallen Heroes, which is, you know us through the parade, Christmas parade and that. So those guys are still missed, and we need to always think of them and gratitude to them. My time is up.
I do want to say, um, the Elks Club here in Hickory is, they are planning a memorial, a veterans' memorial on their property, which is right off of City Walk.
Oh, okay. That's perfect. I didn't know that.
It's in the works.
Okay. Wonderful. Prayers get answered eventually.
Mr. Britton, thank you for your service as well.
Mayor Gess, I do have one question. I know this isn't time for questions, but I'm curious. Where was Lieutenant Gatwood shot down? Where was?
Vietnam.
In Vietnam? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Well, that's where Hollywood took a little bit, we were in North Vietnam.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Where we weren't supposed to be.
Hundred percent.
I've had the privilege of speaking with his son, who was born, he never got to meet his father, and he has a plaque, and on that plaque, it says that war is a terrible thing, but to have nothing worth fighting for is worse. And that's really the only thing that he has that was, that he knows that was from, that was his dad's. So, yeah, and of course, he's from Hickory, so we certainly remember that. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council this evening? All right, doesn't appear to be so. At this time, I'll ask if there's a motion or any discussion for our regular meeting of March 18th, 2025.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries unanimously. Item number seven is our reaffirmation, ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That also carries unanimously. Now, item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's anyone present on staff or council that would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like item K removed.
Okay, item K. Any others? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda absent item K.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Item K.
Yeah, item K is a resolution to transfer assets, water and sewer assets from, that are happening between Catawba County, and they're creating a new southeastern Catawba County Water and Sewer District, and we have to acknowledge an approval of the transfer of those assets. We'd just like to take just one more look at that and bring it back next time.
Okay. All right, so we approve the consent agenda absent item K. It looks like we have three public hearings this evening. So to introduce our first public hearing, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Hornwood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. Member of the city council. First public hearing is consideration of the voluntary contiguous annexation of fifteen point eight-two-eight acres of property located at the terminus of Seventh Street Southeast Hickory and owned by Kinzel Enterprises LLC. It'll be presented by Planning Director Brian Fraser.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. The applicant is Mary Beth Shanahan. Again, this is voluntary contiguous annexation, just under sixteen acres of property. The property is currently vacant, mostly wooded. The future development is to be determined. It could be industrial, it could be large commercial in nature, and of course, annexation's being sought once again to access sanitary sewer. The hash mark here, you can see, is the property in question. This is Highway 70 on Orrain Boulevard, Robinson Road, Catawba Valley Boulevard. Basically, anything in the yellow is in our ETJ, and anything in blue is in the light blue is already in the city limits. So the property is basically at a perspective, and here's the intersection of 70, LR Boulevard, Robinson Road. This here is the Home Depot site, so it would be directly behind that and is it Petz Park? And here you can see the current zoning of the site, which is industrial. In the future, it may, may be rezoned to C3, but that would be premature. But right now, the applicant is looking for annexation. Again, you can see the aerial ortho of the property, and here's again, here's the Home Depot, and here's the Honda dealership along 70. So we believe that the voluntary annexation complies with all applicable state statutes. Adequate public services have been determined to be sufficient, and we don't believe the annexation of the property is going to cause any public service issues. And based upon these findings, staff recommends approval of this annexation before you this evening. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Fraser? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, this is the first of three public hearings this evening, and we have some rules pertaining to the public hearings. We ask that, once again, that if you wish to speak during the public hearing, that you come forward to the podium and that you state your name and your address. During the public hearings, we allow anyone that might be here that would like to oppose a public hearing to speak first. We allow up to fifteen minutes total for anyone to speak in opposition, and we also allow fifteen minutes after that for anyone that would like to speak in favor. If necessary, we'll allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal if needed. So once again, we'll have this, the same rules that will apply to all three of our public hearings this evening. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for the voluntary contiguous annexation that you've just heard described by Mr. Fraser, and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this annexation. There doesn't appear to be anybody that would like to speak in opposition. I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
I'm of approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. For our second public hearing, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. Second public hearing is consideration of the voluntary non-contiguous annexation of one point three-two acres of property located at thirty-four twenty Main Avenue Southeast Conover. It's got a Conover address, but it's in our Hickory's ETJ, owned by US 12 LLC. Be presented by Planning Director Brian Fraser.
Thank you, sir. The applicant are the law offices of the business, a voluntary non-contiguous annexation, just over one acre, as Mr. Wood indicated. Basically, the property is currently vacant. The existing business is looking to expand to their commercial business, and the applicants wish to combine their current property at 101 33rd Street Drive Southeast and expand their operation. They manufacture tools for the electrical industry. You can see the property in question right here. This is Fair Grove Church Road, and this is Highland Avenue Northeast. You can see the Hickory ETJ is in the yellow, and the light blue is the existing city limits. In terms of zoning, again, the property here, this is industrial. This here is the C2, and again, Main Avenue Southeast, Fair Grove Church Road, Highland The aerial, you see the property here, this is Robert Abbey, I believe that's furniture, Fair Grove Service Center. So again, this is a voluntary non-contiguous annexation. We believe it complies with all annexation statutes in the state. Adequate public services are available. We don't believe the annexation of the property is going to cause any problems in terms of public service levels. And again, based on these findings, we respectfully recommend approval.
Any questions for Mr. Fraser? Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition. Doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to speak in opposition. I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Dawn Hanslick Hexmer with the Law Offices of Amos.
Maybe try to pull that mic just a little bit closer.
My name is Dawn Hanslick Hexmer with the Law Offices of Amos, Caprell, and Hexmer. We submitted this application on behalf of the property owner. There is a representative here tonight of the property owner, Mr. Matthew Nolte, if there are any questions about the property, the use of the property, or the expansion of the adjoining business that is planned.
Okay. Would you like to speak, sir?
Um, no, do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? What is your?
We would do that after.
After.
After the discussion, for the discussion.
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Is anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Okay, doesn't appear to be anyone else that would like to speak. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion of discussion.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Anybody got any questions?
If anybody had any questions, there's been a motion or a second.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anybody? I don't think so. We don't, we didn't have any questions. All right, we have a motion and a second. Everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously as well. All right, our third and final public hearing this evening. Once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. Third and final public hearing is consideration of a no-wake zone at the Lake Hickory Marina located on Limbaugh Lane Northwest, extending across the lake to encompass the city of Hickory Riverwalk. It'll be presented by Planning Director Brian Fraser.
Thank you again, Mr. Wood. We haven't once had a no-wake zone in many years. I was here before you quite a while ago regarding the Marina and the no-wake zone when it was under former ownership. But the request is basically to establish a no-wake zone at the Lake Hickory Marina and extend it fully across the lake to encompass the new city of Hickory Riverwalk. Before, I believe, we had, it was a very limited no-wake zone. I think they went out about like thirty feet or so into the lake because some of the docks and the small jet skis, other personal watercraft kayaks were getting swamped because of the speed of certain watercraft on the water. So the application was originally requested by Dan and Megan Kelly. They are the current owners of the Marina. Mr. Kelly is here in the audience this evening. In the summer of 2024, they expressed interest in a closure for safety's sake. Subsequent internal conversations between staff echoed their sentiment, mostly due to the opening of the city's Riverwalk. And since we had supported the first one, they could have either had the city of Hickory or Catawba County or Caldwell County be the sponsor. But since we've already done it once, we might as well do it again, and we had a good relationship with the State Wildlife Commission. Found out from my staff that the same lady that I worked with over ten years ago is still there and helped us with this one. So basically, that application for the no-wake zone must be made to the State Wildlife Commission and must be made by the local municipality. So in August of 2024, city staff formally requested the commission to conduct an investigation into the safety matrix around the potential area of closure on Lake Hickory. You can see, you can see the Marina, Limbaugh Lane, this is the lake, river. You can, you can see the Riverwalk area right here in the bridge over the water. So this was the previous no-wake zone, and that has, now we're looking to extend it to the bridge, slightly to the north and east and all the way over. What we're getting is a lot of people in this channel are traversing the channel, and they're going quite fast. And there are people that rent personal watercraft here or use their kayaks, other means of watercraft to fish, recreate, go here along the Riverwalk. And some miscreants are getting quite a few of our citizens and guests wet. I'm sure not on purpose.
Yeah.
So we're looking at safety measures for that. So in February of 2025, the Wildlife Commission completed their investigation, and it took much longer than normal, and I appreciate the Kelly's persistence and patience. They were delayed, of course, like everything else, by Hurricane Holly. So what we're looking at doing was approving the no-wake zone at the 321 Bridge with revised extension as a necessary measure to enhance safety, protect recreational boaters and infrastructure in the area. And the fifty-foot buffer provides boaters with a greater margin of safety when navigating near the bridge, with limited sight lines and the pylons, of course, as we unfortunately know can create unexpected hazards. So with the increased boating traffic in the region, and it'll definitely be, it's getting to be that time of year again, we believe this change would be proactive. We haven't had any opposition that I'm aware of. Give boaters a bit more room for safety and maneuverability and like, reduce the likelihood of access or damage. So the expanded no-wake zone does align, we believe, with our community goals of promoting a safe and enjoyable environment for all the users, and we believe this is a responsible approach to public safety as well. So staff respectfully recommends that the council approve a no-wake zone for the area surrounding the Marina and the Hickory Riverwalk as recommended by the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, and that you forward the approved resolution to the commission for adoption. I believe that will be at their June meeting and adopt the no-wake zone on Lake Hickory again, once the commission recognizes the resolution again, a couple months hence. And I'd be more than happy to address any questions.
I believe I'm correct. The wildlife's responsible for the buoys and maintaining them and enforcing it and so forth, is that correct?
That is usually a partnership between the commission and the municipality that sponsors it. We haven't had much information in terms of, the Wildlife Commission, I believe, had a third party where they installed them the last time, many years ago, and I think we ended up splitting the cost, but they're responsible for maintenance.
Okay. And enforcement, of course.
And enforcement, yes. And basically, you know, a wake is determined by the size of the watercraft and the speed they're going. The rule of thumb is, you know, more than five miles an hour, but that's nothing definitive.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fraser?
I have one. Is the Marina in our ETJ or in our city limits, or are we just the closest municipality?
It's in, it's in our city limits. There's no ETJ in Caldwell County, so we basically have our city limits right up to the northern part of MDI.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, sir.
Once again, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the no-wake zone proposition. All right, is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Dan Kelly. I am the current owner of the Lake Hickory Pub and Marina located at sixty-seven oh-six Limbaugh Lane. My family and I, we moved here from the Midwest about a year ago. We are big water enthusiasts, and having two teenage kids, one of the things I was surprised about sitting in the Marina is the safety aspect. So if you're familiar with that part of the lake, you got a dynamic where you got the 321 Bridge coming across. You have a brand-new Riverwalk, which is absolutely gorgeous, and there's lots of people on it. You have a Marina that we own on the other side of it, and you have a very, very narrow part of the lake. And so you have a lot of things that are going on. You got a lot of speculation, you got people coming in and out of the Marina to get gas, you got people getting on and off the docks. We also do rent out stand-up paddle boards and kayaks. You have Geithner Park, which is right around the corner. They are the only public access that is only for stand-up paddle boards and kayaks, and the Riverwalk has become a really, really good attraction for the paddling community. So you have all of this taking place, and now you have high-speed fishing boats, you have high-speed jet skis, and you have recreational water sports and so forth. It's pretty much almost on a daily basis, I see close calls. And so I think this is a great safety opportunity. I've also had conversations with the city of Hickory Park and Recs. I think there is opportunities for us to expand and create a safe space for paddling and water recreation right underneath the Riverwalk. So I see this as something that selfishly is, I think, going to be good for our Marina as far as our business as we rebuild after Hurricane Helene, but I think this is something that's going to be very, very positively received by the community, and I have continued to get a lot of support from people in both water recreation, water safety, and I think it's a great thing for the city of Hickory as far as the future of their focus around water recreation.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? All right, doesn't appear to be anyone else that would like to speak. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries unanimously.
I have a question. Do we still have police presence on the?
We do not.
It's wildlife.
I didn't think I'd see that.
Just North Carolina wildlife officers pretty much have jurisdiction for that, although we could if we decided to.
Right. Any other questions? All right. Departmental reports, do we have anything other than the appointments?
No, sir.
Okay. We have any appointments tonight to our boards or commissions?
Yes, I'm going to make an appointment from the floor. Our presenter, I'm going to appoint Joseph Britton to the at-large position on the Recycling Advisory Board.
All right, okay. We have a motion for that?
Second.
All right, is there any others?
Yes, I have one. I'd like to appoint or nominate Ginger Bishop as the Ward One Representative to the Public Art Commission.
Okay. All right, we have two this evening. Is there any others? All right, somebody is making a motion. I don't know who it was.
Well, I make a motion, we accept nominations.
Okay, all right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries unanimously as well. We still have a couple vacancies, different things, so if you're interested in any of those, please see one of us, and we'll certainly provide you with any information you may need concerning our boards and commissions. Any matters not on the agenda, sir?
No, sir.
All right, general comments. I have a couple. First of all, I want to recognize our Hickory Fire Department officers. I know that recently, they've helped out a couple other neighboring agencies or some that weren't really neighboring. I think there was one in, was it Transylvania County, Table Rock, for the Table Rock Fire? I know that we sent some assistance from Hickory to that situation, and also recently to the fire, it was actually in Conover, but there off of Fair Grove Church. to the fire, it was actually in Conover, but there off of Fair Grove Church Road. I know that we sent some assistance to both of those fires, and I know that those counties, those neighborhoods, those people appreciate that. When you have those massive fires like that, all the help you can get is certainly appreciated. And I don't think any municipalities prepared for a fire of that size, so I know that they would reciprocate if we would have a need here in Hickory or Catawba County. So I did want to recognize our fire department and thank them for assisting in those other agencies. And I'll just remind everybody, if you don't already know, there's a state, is it still a statewide fire ban in effect? Does the rain change any of that, or is it still in effect? Do we know?
There's word that it may be released tomorrow in May.
Okay, but as of right now, it's still in effect?
Okay.
All right. So thanks to our firefighters for not only their assistance here in Hickory, but for what they do in other communities as well. Also wanted to recognize Councilman Seaver. He was awarded as the Outstanding Kiwanis Advisor at the Carolina District Key Club Convention recently. Is that true?
Yeah, afraid so.
Okay. So certainly want to thank him. He's been a member of the Kiwanis and past president and advisor to the Key Club and at high school and everything, so he's been involved with that for a lot of years, and we just want to thank him for his service to that group of individuals there, so appreciate that. The only other thing I have is, I think, I think I'm correct, the thirty-second season of the Crawls Dad's opening, is that Tuesday? I think it's this coming Tuesday, April the eighth. It'll be their thirty-second season, so that's something to look forward to. There's a lot, lot going on, a lot of things, a lot of things to do, so that's just one of many things that you can do. So I just want to remind folks of that. That's all I have. Does anybody else have anything that they want to bring up?
Well, I do, since you lifted up Councilman Danny Seaver. Didn't get a chance to announce it at my church yet because we're just now getting back from Pennsylvania this morning, but want to recognize a young man who Councilman Seaver has been working with. I did recognize him at our church convention where I had to preach in Pennsylvania, and he received a standing ovation. So want to recognize Malachi Conley, who is a member of my church, who also went to the Key Club Convention, and he has been duly elected amongst his peers as the Lieutenant Governor of the State of North Carolina.
All right, Danny probably had something to do with that. I'm sure you had an influence.
It's the Carolinas District, which covers North and South Carolina.
Okay, well, congratulations to him as well. All right, anybody else have anything they'd like to? All right, I want to make a motion that we go into closed session. We have approved the minutes from our last closed session, and we have the discussion of a personnel issue. So I'll make a motion that we go into closed session pertaining to those matters.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries. We will return to the council chambers and take any action as needed after the closed session. Thank you for being here this evening.